Yeah, Kevin was big in the hockey.
Yeah.
I was only sixty-seven.
Sixty-six.
I'd like to welcome you all to the April Watertown School District Board meeting, and I'll call the meeting to order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, under the item number two consent agenda, item two point one rope call, please note, Mr. Stein is absent this evening. Item two point two, are there any conflicts of interest that board members need to disclose this evening? If not, item two point three, a review and approval of the agenda. Could we have a motion?
I move approval of the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Moulton and second by Iverson. Any comments or questions on the agenda? If not, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Two point four is to approve the minutes of the March thirteenth and March twentieth meetings. A motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion by Lore and second by Moulton. Any questions, comments? If not, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Two point five, we will receive the financial reports for March.
Thank you. In the general and special education funds, we received the typical amount of taxes along with the regular state aid payment. The expenditures exceeded the revenue during the month is typical for March. The ending cash position reflects an anticipated decrease from the previous two years. Capital outlay had revenue exceed the moderate expenditures for the month with the typical tax proceeds receded and moderate expenditures reported. The cash balance of five point eight million includes approximately two hundred thousand in unexpended capital outlay certificates in support of the high school renovation. K-12 food service received a hundred thousand dollars in other state support related to funding received under the USDA supply chain assistance grant. The ending cash balance in this fund remains at an appropriate level to support the operation. Operation in arena concessions, preschool and custodial funds was routine. Drivers Ed had activity pickup as tuition for the summer program began collection and brought in twenty-three thousand dollars in revenue. A reminder that the fee increased twenty dollars from three thirty to three fifty per student. The Arrow Education Foundation has again agreed to fund seventy-five percent of the tuition costs for students who qualify for free and reduced meals. LATC revenue consisted of two point two million in other state support, that of which a majority is related to House Bill ten thirty-one and the funds received in relation to the archway building project. Funding was also received in the amount of eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand for state tuition assistance and instructor salary support. The expenditures exceeded the revenue for March as typical. The ending cash position of this fund is relatively similar to that of the previous year, considering fluctuations for construction in progress. Operation in bookstore, educare and LATC food service was moderate for the month of March. In the employee benefit trust, the premium in administration and administrative costs during the month of March exceeded the claims. The ending cash balance in this fund has declined and an insurance premium will be necessary as we head into the 2024 fiscal year. I would be happy to answer any questions should you have any.
Mrs. Clausen?
Yep.
For unexpended two hundred thousand for the high school renovation, we're just wrapping that up. Do you think we'll be spending that, or?
Yes, that is in relation to the HVAC portion of the project for the food service department.
Okay.
So that work will take place this summer. So they're just kind of waiting for school to wrap up to, for that remainder of the project.
Very good. Thanks for clarifying.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions on the financial report, we'll move to two point six with the student and staff recognition.
All right, let's see, we've got some students and parents here tonight. The first student I'd like to have come up is Jeremy Stout. Jeremy is a senior at Watertown High School, and he earned the highest possible ACT composite score of thirty-six, a perfect score. Only about one percent of students who take the ACT earn a top score. In the U.S. High School graduating class of twenty twenty-two, for example, only three thousand three hundred seventy-six students out of one point three four million students who took the ACT earned a composite score of thirty-six. Jeremy plans to study physics at South Dakota State University with the goal of becoming a nuclear physicist. He's also an Eagle Scout out of Troop two oh nine and enjoys playing the viola, viola and the symphonic string orchestra and the string ensemble wire choir. Congratulations. Hold on a second. Get it turned this way. We'd get a look at you, too. Congratulations. There you go. We also have some speech and debate awards tonight. The first weekend in March, the Arrow Debate Team competed at the South Dakota State Speech and Debate Tournament in Mitchell. Landon Whittle finished fifth as a quarter finalist in the Lincoln Douglas Debate. Lucy Walker and Josie Compton finished third as semifinalists in public forum debate. Okay, those were our state winners. I see Coach Scott Walker back there. Congratulations to our state. And during February, the Arrow Speech and Debate Team qualified four students for the National Speech and Debate Tournament. That's in Phoenix, Arizona in June. It may have been better to go in February, but we'll take it in June. Maddie McDonald and Noel Dunn qualified in duo and terp, finishing first as the qualify, at the qualifier. Landon Whittle was a finalist in humorous in terp and an alternate to the national tournament. Lucy Walker qualified in congressional debate, finishing first in the final Congress session. And Aiden Calvert also qualified in congressional debate, finishing fifth, fifth, I don't even know what fifth is, fifth in the final section. So congratulations to our speech and debate competitors.
All right. With that, if you're not planning on staying for the rest of the meeting, this is a good time to sneak out. And we'll move on to the discussion items for Lake Area Tech. Three point one, is there any public input this evening on agenda or non-agenda items for Lake Area? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the placement report by President Danielson.
Good evening, Madam President, school board members. This evening I have a brief report to share with you, but really important report. It's the measure of how our 2022 graduates did following graduation, meaning how did they enter the workforce, will continue their education. If Mike Cartney is ringing in your ears right now, you're probably hearing something like, we don't just look at graduation, we look at what happens to our graduates once they leave our doors. Success really is about placement. So Derek, I'll have you slide into the report itself. There's some information up on the screen if you'd like to turn around and check that out. So again, this is for our 2022 graduates. Six months following their graduation, we take a look at what has happened to them. Are they working? Are they continuing in their education? Are they serving in the military, or are they still looking for jobs? And our graduates last year continued the Lake Area tradition, ninety-nine percent placement. You'll see on the screen that about eighty percent of our graduates are currently working, and about twenty percent are continuing their education or are serving in the military. We just have nine students that graduated last spring who are still seeking career placement, and there were two students, and from rounding perspective, it looks like zero percent, but two students who graduated last year who are not in the labor market. And so out of the more than seven hundred graduates, seven hundred and eighty-six graduates from 2022, eleven total, who are not currently employed or continuing their education or serving in the military. So that is the standard by which we measure our success. We certainly want that number to be at ninety-nine percent or better. As the report was coming together, there was ninety-eight percent and really close to ninety-nine percent, and as the report finished up, just across that ninety-nine percent. So if I remember the numbers correctly, it's about five years in a row where ninety-nine percent of Lake Area graduates are, are working, continuing their education. Derek, I'll have you slide to the next numbers here. So in the graduate survey responses, ninety-five percent of our graduates responded about where they're currently at. And of those who are employed, ninety-three percent of them are in jobs in the fields with a major which they studied. Eighty-four percent of them are employed here in South Dakota. So if you think back a couple of meetings, I think it might have been at the February meeting, we talked about the makeup of our students this spring. Twenty percent of our students are coming from out of state, eighty percent from South Dakota. And so when you see our graduates who are employed in South Dakota exceeding that eighty percent, that's a good trend line for us, that we're keeping more of those out of state students here in South Dakota, and they're finding good jobs. You can see at the bottom of the screen there that the average starting wage for our graduates from last year went up eighty-three cents per hour to twenty-three ninety-nine per hour. So that's just shy of fifty thousand dollars for their first job following college, which is a very good place to start their, their professional careers. Derek, I'll have you slide forward. A few more numbers to keep in mind here. Twenty-two, that's the number of programs that had one hundred percent placement. So for twenty-two of our thirty programs offered last academic year, one hundred percent of their graduates are continuing their education, are employed. There are eleven programs that had a hundred percent placement in their field in South Dakota. So think about the growth that Lake Area has experienced over the last decade plus. Lake Area graduates continue to find employment, continue to find employment in their field in South Dakota. And so I just want to take a moment to commend the Lake Area Tech staff and all of the partners and industry who have worked really hard, that even through the growth of the college, they have scaled to make sure that programs are in the right places, in the right proportions, to ensure that our graduates find really great jobs following their time at Lake Area. And then last year, there were seven programs that had average starting wages over fifty-five thousand dollars per year in their first jobs out of college. So the highest earning program in 2022 were our graduates from the RN program. Those students averaged over seventy-five thousand dollars per year in starting wages. Medfire Rescue, Electronics and Robotics, Energy Operations and Technicians, Precision Machinists and our diesel programs also rounded out that top seven of programs that had starting wages over fifty-five thousand dollars. And then finally, I just want to make public recognition to Julie Mullenhoff and the South Dakota Department of Labor and Regulation. We want to make sure that we are accurately and in a valid way looking at our success over time and that of our graduates. And so we partner with Department of Labor, and they contact all of our graduates and get the information that gets boiled down into this presentation to share with you all. But having that third-party group reach out and be able to look at wage records and that kind of thing on their end allows us to ensure that we're not messing with the numbers in any way, and we're getting valid, reliable information back from our graduates. So big kudos to Department of Labor, particularly to Julie Mullenhoff, who helps us out with all of that. Madam President, I'll pause there. Any questions from the board? We'd be happy to take those.
Does Bill Dakota, does that require a student to stay in-state as a scholarship?
Yes, so the commitment with Bill Dakota is three years working for a company in the field where the Bill Dakota program is eligible for the scholarships and years following graduation. So I think that is a contributing factor to that movement in the eighty-four percent of students who are studying here and, or working here in South Dakota after they graduate in their field of study. And last week, the State Board of Tech, I met, and we were able to share with them growth in another one of our scholarship programs called the Workforce Scholarship. It's very similar to Bill Dakota, it's just for programs outside of the Bill Dakota Scholarship, and it includes employers from both in South Dakota and out of state. Three years ago, that scholarship fund was just over a hundred thousand dollars. This last year, we awarded more than six hundred thousand dollars in scholarships out of that workforce scholarship fund. And it has a similar commitment to Bill Dakota where an employer is saying, we'd love to scholarship you and pay for your college tuition and expenses, but you'll come work with us for two or three years following graduation. So all of those are great opportunities for our students.
Thank you. They're both excellent programs.
Congratulations to all those students, first of all, that were placed and are where they're going to be. And congratulations to the staff and admin for helping get them there.
Yes, staff have been phenomenal, making sure that programs are well-aligned.
All right. If there's no other comments, we'll move to the action items for Lake Area. And first of all, personnel, four point, one point one, retirements.
Thank you. We have one retirement listed in the packet this time, and I would ask for the board's approval as listed.
I'll make a motion, motion to approve the retirement.
Go ahead.
Second.
Motion by Lore, second by Moulton to approve the retirement. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Four point, one point two, the resignations.
As of this afternoon, there was an update to this section of the agenda. There are five resignations listed, and I would ask for the board's approval as listed.
Okay, motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignations.
Second.
Motion by Lore, second by Iverson. Any comments or questions on the resignations? Hearing none, all in, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Four point, one point three, the contract recommendations and addendums.
Thank you. There are a variety of adjunct and corporate ed contracts before you, and one part-time temporary contract, and then contract recommendation for a lateral move for an existing staff person. So I appreciate the board's approval of the contract recommendations and addendums as listed.
Okay, motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract recommendation and addendums as presented.
And second.
Motion by Lore and second by Moulton. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Then we'll move to the property items. Under that, four point, two point one, consider the agricultural land lease agreement.
Thank you, Madam President. I, Lake Area has a longstanding twenty-year tradition now with Al Raider. He has leased a section of land, forty-five acres of land, to Lake Area for ag demonstrations and trials. And the lease agreement for 2023 is similar to or exactly the same as the 2022 agreement for a total price of eight thousand one hundred dollars. I'd ask for the board's approval of that.
Okay, motion, please.
I move that we accept the lease agreement as presented.
And second.
Motion by Iverson and second by Moulton to approve the land lease agreement with Al Raider. Any comments or questions?
I'd like to make one comment, and I think this is, it's really important to have the same land year to year, because all of your records, your soil history. So a, a big thanks to the Raiders for, for doing that at a very reasonable price, and also for the consistency of doing that year after year.
All right, if no other comments, all in favor of approval of the lease agreement, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Moving on now to the discussion items for fourteen dash four. First of all, five point one, is there any public input this evening on agenda or non-agenda items? Okay, five point two is the Northeast Technical High School report.
Yes, thank you. The Board of Superintendents will meet on May second, and prior to that, actually, the, the board, for Northeast Tech Board will meet on April nineteenth, five forty-five. And then just to make an announcement, the Northeast Tech Project Day is actually May third. I think the final is, is that five-thirty time. I should add that double check, but, so don't forget to stop over and check out the projects at Northeast Tech that day. And if you want to put a bid in on some Adirondack chairs, you know, seems like there's always a few of those to be had.
It's five to six-thirty.
Thank you. Five to six-thirty on the third.
Okay, thank you. Move on to five point three and the elementary school update.
Thank you. When we last met, at the special board meeting on March twentieth, I, I mentioned that I would put together an update on just where, where we've gone since then. So in the meantime, we've been working on the possibility of a boundary for the partner school concept. We have met with the Boys and Girls Club to shore up before and after school possibilities with them, and have gotten some reassurances that if indeed the partner school concept is approved, that we would have at least the coverage we do now. From their end, there are some different possibilities with only having, for example, say, two sites where there would be the upper grades. So same, same thing from an efficiency standpoint, depending on what the outcome is, that there might be some possibilities for that. We've mentioned that there is a possibility of direct shuttle from the, the upper elementary sites to the Boys and Girls Club itself, rather than going through the intermediate school exchange. Just a reminder to everyone here and, and listening or watching in the audience, what was talked about at the March twentieth, special school board meeting on this, was the concept that would involve a three-year transition from the current setup of five neighborhood schools to a format of two sets of partner schools. That complete transition would be for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, and in this scenario, McKinley and Mallette would have the primary elementary sites, that would be pre-K through first grade. Lincoln and Jefferson would be the upper elementary sites with second through fourth grade. So on one side of the, you know, if we talk about a dividing line for the district, so you would have half of your elementary students on either side of that line. McKinley and Jefferson would be paired together. Mallette and Lincoln would be paired together, and that would mean that Roosevelt would be the school that would be recommended for closure. That would, that recommendation following a three-year transition would be for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, leaving Roosevelt open for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. We are considering this, if we put it into a policy standpoint, like a first reading for the public, that that is our intent for a recommendation to be brought back at the May eighth school board meeting for consideration, for, to, to vote on whether or not this is acceptable. And so part of the reason we are asking for the May eighth deadline is for planning purposes. So for example, if agreed upon for the, the plan to go into effect, that would mean that a couple of things that would be done for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year is that our early childhood programs, that would mean the early childhood special education preschool that's at Garfield right now, would transition into McKinley and Mallette. Junior kindergarten at Roosevelt would transition into McKinley-Mallette. And then we would also consider the Roosevelt kindergarten as one where we would probably not start a kindergarten class at Roosevelt for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year and incorporate them into the other sites so that they could follow along on the plan. The three-year transition was put in, it was to help so that we had less volatility of either a student or a staff member moving for a year and then back for a year, that sort of thing. And the three-year allows it to be smoothed out a little bit more and to come up with a little better ease with which we can do that. That, so what, what I probably need, so there's no action asked for tonight, other than maybe an acknowledgement that we would bring this forward in May for consideration, which would then allow me to host a parent meeting with the Roosevelt families to discuss this further. Another piece that was shown at the, at the special board meeting was we created charts for each of the five elementary schools that included, to be shared for where your child would go to finish out their elementary career. And so Roosevelt, with that school being the one recommended for closure, that would, it would be a little more pertinent for us to meet with those families and have a little more in-depth conversation about that, because the other, the other schools look a little more on the path of either the current students that are there finishing where they're at, or in the case of like McKinley and Mallette, they would, they would be able to hop in on the partner school concept in the, what's the recommended fashion. So they're a little more straightforward. It's the Roosevelt families that we feel we would need to have a, a little more in-depth conversation with. And we would like to do that prior to the May eighth school board meeting. So I would stand by for questions or thoughts.
Does anybody have any comments that you'd like to make or questions for Dr. Danielson? I was kind of looking for an indication. This is a first reading moving ahead. First of all, I want to thank people that have reached out to myself and I'm sure other board members since the time of the March twentieth meeting. There's been some very good feedback again, and continue to bring it. And I am in favor of continuing on the timeframe that we're looking at. I think the admin has put in a lot of work to make this logical and, and worthwhile to keep considering.
I would agree with, with your statements.
We have a budget meeting coming up later this month. We're looking at finance as well. There's, there's many factors that, that go into this decision. It's not a light decision. So we've all been keeping track of multiple variables and ideas, and we've been listening deeply.
I might add this, sorry, the survey link is still active, and we did add slide, there's a link off the website for information on the, the plan. So if people have not taken a look at that, it has the slides from the meeting, and you can still contribute to the survey link.
Okay. If there's no other comments on that, we'll look forward to discussing that again at the May board meeting. Moving on next to the action items, first of all, six point one, approval of the bills. Could we have a motion?
I move approve the bills.
Second.
Motion by Moulton, second by Lore. Any comments or questions on any of the items in the bills? If not, all in favor of approving the bills, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, six point two, under personnel, we'll start with retirements.
Thank you. Just one retirement this month, and do recommend approving this retirement.
A motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the retirement.
Second.
Motion by Lore, second by Iverson. Comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Six point two point two, the resignations.
We've got a list of resignations in front of you. You can see we had a few additions since last week. We also had one today to be noted. Dr. Jennifer Heath resigned as Director of Special Services. Services at the end of the year.
Okay, motion please.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignations. And second.
Motion by Moulton, I mean, motion by Lower and second by Moulton to approve the resignations. Any comments or questions?
And any note on the extra duty only resignations, those are open pending suitable or pending suitable replacement.
Okay. Okay, all in favor of approval of the resignation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And six point two point three, the contract recommendations and addendums.
You can see we've started to hire for next school year, so that process is underway. Just, we recommend the approval of the contract recommendations and addendums as presented.
Motion please.
I'll make approval to approve the contract recommendations and addendums as presented.
Second.
Motion by Lower and second by Iverson to approve the recommendations and addendums. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the property items, six point three point one, authorize continued participation in the ASBSD's workers' compensation coverage.
Yes, the district requests to continue participation under the coverage of associated school boards. The renewal proposal came in at a one percent increase to that plan as well as a fifty thousand dollar share of stabilization reserves for rate relief. Just a reminder to the board that a December one deadline is in place to provide board approval over written notice of intention to seek bids for the subsequent coverage year. So this puts our total price for work comp for next year at a hundred and forty-four thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
I move that we accept the proposal.
And second.
Motion by Iverson and second by Moulton to authorize continued participation in the work comp coverage from ASBSD. Is there any comments or questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under six point three point two, we are considering school bus bids.
Yes, it is recommended to authorize the bids received from Harlow's Bus Sales Incorporated under a Sourcewell Cooperative bid for three-seated sixty-five passenger buses in the amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and one-seated seventy-two passenger bus in the amount of a hundred and twenty-six, three hundred and fifty-three dollars. The buses are not anticipated to be received until July of two thousand and twenty-four, and therefore, we are requesting to purchase two years' worth of transportation cycle to keep up with demand and ordering. These funds are noted in the five-year capital outlay plan.
Okay, motion please.
I move approve Harlow's bus bid as presented.
Oh, second.
Motion by Moulton, second by Iverson to approve the school bus bids. Any comments or questions?
And I maybe have asked you just before, how long do we keep our buses in service?
We typically look at a mileage factor, and that mileage ranges from anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand miles. And that's for both the transportation fleet, just the regular Suburbans, and the buses.
It makes sense to keep purchasing each year, otherwise we get stuck with an outdated fleet and a huge bill.
Yes.
Thanks for checking on that, because I'd asked also.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got the motion and the second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Six point three point three, consider suburban bid.
Yes, it is recommended to authorize the bid received from Dave Haylor Automotive for the purchase of a used eight-passenger vehicle in the bid amount of fifty-four or five hundred dollars. The suburban met specifications of a used suburban with mileage under thirty-five thousand.
I move that we accept the bid from Dave Haylor Automotive for the suburban.
And second.
Motion by Iverson and second by Moulton to approve the suburban bid. Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to six point four, approve the South Dakota High School Activities Association membership resolution.
Yes, this is our annual authorization to remain a member of the South Dakota High School Activities Association, so recommending your approval of this so that we are in the South Dakota High School Activities Association again for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Motion please.
I move approval of the membership resolution for South Dakota activities as presented.
Second.
Motion by Moulton and second by Iverson. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Six point five, we have another calendar update?
We do. We did miss a day here in between board meetings. My recommendation is that that be made up on May thirty-first as a staff day only. And I say May thirty-first as the placeholder date, but we would work with staff because we have a number of trainings that are in the works that would probably qualify for filling that day. And that would be the only recommendation for this time, but just to also alert the board and anyone listening that if by chance we would have any more days, would recommend June first, June second as staff-only days. With anything, if there would be more than two somehow before the May board meeting or before the end of the school year, that those not be made up. So all that is being asked is to amend the calendar to have May thirty-first as a staff day only.
Okay, could we have a motion, please?
I move approval to approve the calendar update.
Motion by Lower.
Second.
Second by Moulton. Any comments or questions on this calendar update? If not, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And I would just remind, this was a previous amended update, but April twenty-first is a full day for students and staff. That was previously a twelve-thirty dismissal, and that was amended last month to make April, Friday, April twenty-first a full day of school.
Okay. Item six point six, student enrollment requests.
There are no open enrollments for this month.
Okay. And thirteen twenty-eight ten?
Yes, we have one thirteen twenty-eight ten for your approval.
Can we have a motion to approve, please?
I will make a motion to approve the thirteen twenty-eight ten.
Motion by Lower.
Second.
Second by Moulton.
Pick one.
To approve the thirteen twenty-eight ten. Is there any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we'll move to communications and seven point one. First of all, the administrative report.
Yes, I want to make it, just so the public knows, we are having a think and drive, stay-alive assembly on Wednesday, April twelfth. So you will see a mock accident out front for juniors and seniors. So if you see first responders or a crash on Wednesday, the twelfth, so two days from now, that is a planned mock accident. So just to not alert anybody, so we thank, are thankful for the help there. I already mentioned, April twenty-first is a full day. Also, unfortunately, with the winter weather conditions up here, Watoma Relays has been canceled for the year. That was originally supposed to be in Webster, and because of their field conditions have already canceled. That's correct, Mr. Boyens. And then the Northeast Tech Project Day, five to six-thirty on May third. And then we need to set, we had originally set April twenty-fourth as our combined joint budget meeting for Lake Area and K-12, but it sounds like we have some conflicts with that date for our board. And so we are asking for Monday, May first, if that would work.
Okay. Everybody can take a look at their calendars and get back to Dr. Danielson or myself?
Yes, and then we would have to publish that one in accordance. But it'd be five-thirty PM right here, Monday, May first is what we are recommending administratively.
All right. Then next on the agenda is seven point two, and board reports to the superintendent. Is there any items for that? Okay, I guess I will report that my seat is coming up for reelection, and I do intend to run again this year. I know I had indicated earlier on that I was possibly going to not, but I'm still in it. So I'm hoping that that will go well. Anything else?
I think Lake Area has a big luncheon coming up.
Monday, eleven-thirty AM, the governor's luncheon is happening. So we invite folks to join us. It's the major fundraiser for scholarships for the school. So if you'd like to attend, seats are forty dollars each, and you can RSVP this week with the foundation.
Okay, good. Anything, any other items on the board report? Okay, if not, that concludes the regular part of our meeting. And next is an executive session to discuss negotiations. We need a motion to go into executive.
Thanks.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Iverson, second by Moulton. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There's no action after the executive session, so we thank you for your attendance this evening.